Call the meeting to order, call the roll please.
Okay, Director Smith will be running white. Um, Director, here, Director Howard, here, Director Hart, here, Director Baker.
Here.
Man, put the flag. Consent of the agenda? Have any change?
I do not have any.
Yes, we have to think of the one special license, the one for the big.
Oh, we do, that's right. Is that for the Republican Party?
Yes, for the big fucking future, do you?
Okay.
It is the last incident table to the next.
Okay, yeah, we need to take that one off because the dates need to be changed, so anyone needs to be submitted, but they're still here to speak to the other one.
Yes.
So we're removing B three B under public hearings.
And it won't just be the special.
Agreed with changes?
Second.
We have a motion and second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, pose same sign. Any public comment?
Uh, yes, let's set here. Uh, the first person I have is Debbie Olem. I'm okay, but I'm gonna go, okay, whenever you are ready, hey. Debbie Olem, two two eight Comanche Street, I'm here to ask the same previous questions that have still not been addressed. Ordinance three has now been voted on, posted and published, and it is still a misrepresentation of the facts. I'm here to ask you if you're going to repeal it. Um, the ordinances voted on are not being stated correctly, they're not following your policy. Um, also, I'd like to let you know that only one ordinance, one is on the website. This division is that is being caused by personal agendas is destroying the relationship between the town and K W W A. It is well on its way to bankrupting both entities. I am sure that the citizens that you're representing did not expect you to allow that to happen. Without splitting the monthly fees paid to the town and K W W A, I'd like for you to look at your expenses and tell me whether or not you can truly afford to keep your doors open and do the services that the town needs. You are in the red. I have asked for open records requests. I look at the DOLA website, your end of year actuals for twenty-three for legals are sixty-one thousand dollars. I do an open records request and I, there's twenty-eight dollars, twenty-eight thousand dollars difference. We've got a problem. Um, meanwhile, I also want to know, has the lien been corrected that was filed against Mr. Digby's property? I brought that to you guys two months ago and asked you to look into it, it has their own company on it. Um, I'm also curious about where the shelters were that were to be built over two years ago at the park. Um, uh, maybe if all the time wasn't being spent on how to get craft and the town, we could all move forward, collect the tap fees, collect school impact fees and the fire department impact fees when we have one house being built in town.
Anybody else?
Uh, yes, give me just a second. So I can reset these. Diane Edstrom, yeah. Um, so give me just a sec here. Can we say? Oh, I have handouts, can I approach?
I have too much to say for ten minutes, so we've got three minutes.
All right, that's why we have handouts.
All right, all right, good evening, Diana Edstrom, two six zero six zero County Road forty-one in Elbert. I'm here to comment on my recent experience with an O R R open records request. On April first, I sent an O R R to the town of Kiowa asking for monthly billing statements for twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-four. I attached a town of Kiowa July billing twenty twenty-one spreadsheet from an August tenth meeting package to clarify my request. I also asked if charges would be applied and what they would be before proceeding. I've attached that spreadsheet on that handout so you can see what type of information I was requesting. Billing statements on a monthly basis, who the vendor was, what they were being paid for, date amounts paid to them and invoice number. Uh, Ms. Boyd and I exchanged multiple emails regarding what I was requesting, and I referred it to the spreadsheet attachment for clarification. Um, the response I received was, um, quote, "I understand this was a format a previous town administrator utilized to present her financial reports to the board at monthly meetings, but it no longer exists." They were also asking us to go back a couple of years, so this request will require us to pull boxes from storage and it will require more time than normal. Thus, we would need an additional seven days to completely fill this request. Nine hours of gathering, reviewing and copying documents and you see what the charges are on there, approximately fifteen hundred black and white paper copies at thirty-five cents a copy, that's five hundred and twenty-five dollars. And I would be required to pay a deposit of seven ninety-five with balance being refunded if it takes less time and less copies. And we will await your payment to begin fulfilling your request. I canceled my request after receiving these charges, seventy-five, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars is beyond my means. I've done many O R Rs over the years with multiple county agencies. Any issues that arise are usually worked out through phone calls and email clarifications. My experience with the town was puzzling and frustrating. I thought it would be simple to obtain these records, especially since so many things are digital these days and the town uses QuickBooks for their finances. Due to my time being limited, the following bullet points on page two. Provide references to the Kiowa Municipal Code, Colorado Open Records Acts, Colorado Revised Statutes, as well as questions I have as to why I received the response that I did on my O R R. So you'll see in here, I have quoted the Kiowa Municipal Code, which talks about records being open for public inspection within a reasonable times or defines a reasonable time as three days. Um, then it goes on, I have the Cora Act for that, more on. Okay, um, I would ask that my written comments be included in the meeting minutes and, um, I can email you a copy of that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Uh, no, Sharon, only Republicans.
Uh, staff reports, I have nothing, any board of trustee member have anything that they would like to interject? Very not, oh, go ahead, that's fine, okay. Uh, Ruth, are you on?
I'm here.
Hi.
Do you have any comment for, uh, staff reports?
Uh, not at this time.
All right, thank you. You really?
Um. We are still working with the judge and our code enforcement person to get, um, if proper and, um, legal court put in place.
Okay.
Um, it's still the challenges, um, how to approach with a prosecutor. Um, so we're still working through that, it does look like it'll be pushed out till May, which is fine. It seems a lot of the issues are correcting themselves right now, so things that we thought we may take to court are not. When we presented a court at this time.
Um, is there anything that, that we need to do to help the process?
No, well, there's nothing that this board can do to help facilitate that.
Okay, because it seems like it just keeps rolling. Is it the prosecutor that's holding this up?
Um, it's the people that we are talking to for prosecuting services and what they're wanting to charge the town to do that. Especially when they're not present during a month, they still want to build a town.
Where, where are we with that right now?
What do you mean, where are we at with that?
Because I know that we had, like, we had gotten, you know, some prosecutors saying that this is what we're doing, so are we with nobody or are we?
We still do not have an adequate prosecutor in place at this time, the judge doesn't feel comfortable moving forward until we have that ironed out.
Okay, does, can he suggest people or are we having people?
He is suggesting somebody, and that's kind of what we're waiting on as well.
Okay.
Um, there is one more item to my monthly report, um, on my hand, this year passes down. One for each board member. This is a memo for myself to the board. It's my response to public comment made during the March twelfth, two thousand twenty-four Town of Kiowa monthly meeting. In response to the public comments made at the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Trustees held on March twelve, two thousand twenty-four, staff is recommending that the board consider including the following clarifications to the record when approving the minutes as follows. Statement made by Debbie Olem, since the termination of Michelle Ozier as town administrator. Response, previous town administrator, Michelle Ozier resigned for her position via mutually agreed upon resignation agreement and mutual release with the town on August eighteenth, two thousand eighteen, and in no form or fashion was terminated by this town. Number two, statement by Debbie Olem. And lastly, this attack and accusations put out by your attorney and the administrator that K W W A signed an agreement without voting. Response, Ms. Olem is inaccurate, oh, sorry, is accurate in that a vote was taken on July thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one, monthly meeting by the K W W A. The minutes approved by K W W A and signed by Ms. Olem reflect a motion made by Eric Whitman to approve the Kiowa Creek Meadows Development Agreement with the changes of the verbiage and proof of validity by Eric Whitman, seconded by Teresa Lowery. She's accurate in her statement that a vote was taken and a motion carried. However, the motion and vote were taken on the Kiowa Creek Meadows Development Agreement and not on the Waterwell Development Agreement. Staff has reviewed and reviewed again the recordings of the K W W A meeting to include this reference July thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one K W W A meeting that was previously posted on the prior town of Kiowa Facebook page. I can attest these minutes were accurate. Topics of seven minutes are included with your memo. Number three, statement by Debbie Olem, as keeper of the minutes, videos, permits and all records of the town of Kiowa, and the Board of Trustees have failed to do so. Administrator Kim Boyd closed the town of Kiowa website that was up to date with twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one records. Where do those records go? They are not on the new website. Response, new state laws have been put in place regarding accessibility on public websites, and the town of Kiowa's web designer, Cobrely Web Creations, has provided her expertise. I have provided you with her complete memo, but in summary, in evaluating your website reusability and accessibility, I'm recommending that those interested in those documents can request them through your office either via Cora or another method. Most of my government clients post the current year plus the previous one or two years back and have found that that to still be more than what they are legislatively required to make available, but also manageable in remediating those documents to meet the requirements of House Bill twenty-one dash one 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 zero. Remediating additional years of documents likely could prove to be a poor use of funds as the documents can be remediated upon request, upon request, more efficiently and cost effectively. Number four, statement by Debbie Olem. Last night you voted on the ordinance that was not available to the public on your website. As of the scheduling of the meeting, the Town of Kiowa Board of Trustees voted on March eleventh, two thousand twenty-four in a four to two vote in favor of approving ordinance three, series two, two thousand twenty-four. On page two, at the fifth whereas, as the development agreement failed to follow any formal approval requirements, there is no record of the water authority approving the well agreement in any manner. There are no minutes, resolutions or motions to approve the well development agreement by the water authorities. In response, the ordinance was made available on the website on March eleventh, two thousand twenty-four, and review of the minutes of K W W A meetings verify that at best K W W A approved a draft of the Kiowa Creek Meadows Development Agreement and affirms there was no approval, motion or otherwise on a water well agreement. Number five, statement by Debbie Olem indicating that the town of Kiowa failed to keep minutes or video, and this is a violation of the operating agreement. I can play for you the July thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one meeting that was posted on July nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one by town administrator Maria Morales. At around minute twelve, the entire board voted to approve upon validation of the company and a small verbiage change. This Facebook page was deleted and also deleted also, but is still accessible. Response, the Facebook page of meeting video was not a proper platform for K W W A meeting records. When Kim Boyd became town administrator, agendas and minutes were then posted on a dedicated K W W A page of the Town of Kiowa's official website. Number six, statement by Debbie Olem wherein she asserts, "I also want to point out you broke your own home rule, charter rules by not allowing public comment at the meeting held on March fifth, two thousand twenty-four." Response, at the special meeting held on March fifth, two thousand twenty-four, the town did not take any action or have any topics other than executive session. However, the town will provide an opportunity to make public comment for all special and regularly scheduled meetings moving forward. Number seven, statement by Devin Olem. By the way, there are specific legal readings to be made when coming out of executive session, and the board members are to acknowledge if there is anything in their opinion discussed outside of the published reason for executive session. The mayor knows that from serving on fire, on the fire district board, I hope you will get better legal advice. Response, the town considers the executive session an important privilege and has a practice of acknowledging issues or discrepancies if they exist after executive session.
Do you have Ms. Olem a chance to respond to that or you just want to keep the clock going? Is that shameful?
I'm sorry, I can't hear, so I don't know who's speaking.
That is Ms. Edstrom, she's requesting that Debbie Olem be given her, an opportunity to respond to our response of her public comment last meeting. And, uh, it's shameful that we're not allowing her that if we're not.
And I got no response at all.
Excuse me, like, we prefer to keep this meeting, um, in order, we will certainly take your comment, but ask you to come up and state your name and so on and you know, if the board wants to.
Yep, Diana, it's, yep, Diana Edstrom, two six zero six zero County Road forty-one. Um, yes, I do think it's shameful that you're using this platform to pick on a private citizen that made comments and calling her out as an example, and that's the way it's coming across. She came up and made comments, citizens are allowed to make comments. Um, and to target her back, I think is almost irresponsible. I made comments that I really needed responses to, I read what I gave you guys. Nobody asked any questions, nobody comments on it, and these are real issues. So, you know, I, I think you quite frankly owe her an apology, just like an apology for the things you said about Tim in February and said he was a threat to this town. So making this personal is not helpful, and that's what I've been hearing in these last two meetings, thank you.
Debbie, would you like to speak to, would you write Debbie down first?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Debbie Alum, two two eight Comanche Street, I would just point out that, you know, there's a couple of things you still left out of there. I still ask why Trevor's vote was not an issue, why it was an issue at one meeting but not at another. I, it doesn't really matter, I just wanted to know why it was, it didn't make sense. Um, we, it was a big discussion at the one meeting, so, um, I do think, and, and I am as a taxpayer, going to hold everyone accountable. So I do think you guys need to review your home rule charter. And you're right, Mr. Colm did great on the fire district, he does know those things, but those are questions that are to be asked when you come out of executive session.
Anything else on that?
No, sir.
Any comment on public works?
No.
No? Uh, code enforcement report is in your packet?
Yes, the first quarter report for two thousand twenty-four is included in your packet.
Okay, we'll move down to consent items, approval of the minutes from March twelfth, two thousand twenty-four.
So I just need to clarify that the purpose of Kim's comments were in response to the meeting minutes that you're review, reviewing this evening. And the request is to even incorporate those responses because as a matter of conduct, we typically don't respond to public comments unless we know exactly the answer and staff has taken the time to review and review again the minutes in order to respond uh, to the statements of a citizen, so the issue is whether you want to incorporate those comments and responses in the minutes because they're directly responsive or it just remains on the record as staff's response.
I'd entertain a motion to minutes of March twelfth. So we'll, second, we have a motion on second. Any discussion? I'd rather put those staff response for this one.
Now, I'd like to note that when Ms. Olem made her public comments, she handed a copy of them to us and asked that they be put in public record, next number, you know, meeting minutes. And as far as responding to them.
Any more discussion? Call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith.
Yeah.
Director Wyman.
Yeah.
Director Howard.
Yes.
Director Hart.
Yes.
Director Satan.
Yeah.
Director Baker.
Yeah.
We have two nay and four four.
Yes. Expenditures year to date, hopefully everybody had an opportunity to pursue those.
Um, you, I had a specific comments about ours, to be honest with you.
Anything you'd like to bring to our attention?
Yes, I know that's something.
We're giving something out of ordinary. Good, I understand the motion to approve. So move. We have a motion, we have a second. I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, we will now, um, call our public hearing to order. We have a number of events that are going on. And, uh, I'd like for you to take the podium and tell us a little bit about what's going on. Us.
Yeah. That's what happens when you sit in the back. I know it.
Lori, where'd Lori go?
Loris are in that corner.
Come on, get her.
I'll roll up. And I'm doing these to you, so when you.
All right, let us know, uh, tell us her name and, uh, what's going on with this cowboy up stuff.
Terry Mills and Lori Campbell with Cowboy Up in Kiowa. Uh, we're here for our liquor license permits for the Cowboy Up rodeo, the fair and for the first responder rodeo.
In the past, we've always had, uh, armbands.
Wristbands, yes, sir.
Wristbands, tip certified?
Yes, sir.
And it's been a very successful event over the years, all three of them.
Yes, sir.
So.
To my knowledge.
Well, unless you're on the wrong end of a bowl, then.
Yeah, I know.
Any questions from the board in reading through their information?
I have a statement.
Go ahead.
I have to recuse myself from this vote because I am on the rodeo.
Cowboy Up, okay. All righty.
Uh, didn't, was it last meeting or two meetings ago that they had talked about, I know Bear Board came in and talked about putting signs up, and then we had talked about Cowboy Up, how in the past they've done like a sign over eighty-six, is that something that you either did?
Uh, in the past, we, uh, well, it was, uh, many years ago, I, REA took the poles down so that you can't hang a banner over the roadway. Um, but from gossip I've heard through the woods, um, Cora is offering to put those poles back up. So, um, at some point, if that happens, we would like to know about it so we could have our banners remade. Because the ones we have, they're kind of old and a little cracked, I wouldn't want it to come down on a car.
I was curious about that.
It'd be something we'd be interested in, especially for next year, absolutely.
Terry?
Yes, sir.
I have a question, not for them, Kim, can we do all three of these in one vote? It just dawned on me laughing, you're caring, I'm caring. Can we do all of it in one vote or do we need to, okay?
Yeah, I believe Rick was going to have them all heard and then move to do that.
Oh, I, I mean, just for Cowboy Up.
Oh, yeah.
Well, we got Cowboy Up.
And we're going to go through all the rest, okay?
Elver County Fair.
All right, well, my horse is then.
So just hold on.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you, ladies, about, uh, our, Krista Rector doing the something called the gala? We're going to have covered coming?
No, we don't, not at this point. We are, we are doing this the right way, not the way that's been done in the past. Um, so if we, yeah, we're going to move on to the next.
We'll move on to the, uh, gala.
So you're done with me?
We're done with you. Are you Gala?
I am Gala this evening.
Hey, come on up there and talk to us.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Callie Benson, I'm the Elbert County Extension Director, and I'm here on behalf of the Elbert County 4-H Leaders Council President Krista Rector as it is Prom Week in Deer Trail where she teaches and gets away the way. Um, so you're, my, our application for the 4-H Gala, which is one of the largest fundraisers that we have within the county uh, that supports all of our 4-H youth, and there are four hundred and twenty-five of them this year.
Wow.
Um, with scholarships, not only for graduating seniors, but for all the towns and leadership conferences that they can attend in addition to different projects, special requests, scholarships and, and help. Um, this is where the majority of that funding comes from. So the Leaders Council hosts their Gala event, there is a flyer hanging in your, in the town building here, so we hope you all feel welcome and invited to come on April twenty-seventh. Um, it's going to be a great time, they have a silent auction, a live auction and a really fantastic meal plan for everyone today. Is there any questions that I can help answer?
This is one of the best things that goes on 4-H. Yeah.
It's a good thing.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay.
We have, uh, one more on the list, the Elbert County Republican Party.
Yes. Hi, Eric Carlson, on behalf of, uh, Dan Guthrie, who's the event manager. Um, we are, as you had mentioned this earlier, uh, all the attendees will be IDed, it's a closed event in the exhibit building um, and handstand. Tip, everyone who's serving alcohol will be tipped, certified by, or trained. Yeah, tipped, trained by Dan Guthrie, who was certified through tips.
We've done this for a number of years.
Yeah.
Any questions from the board? We all had a chance to review the information. Thank you, sir.
Yes, thank you.
Um, are there any further questions from either the board or those present regarding the information provided in the public hearing? There is no further question or discussion on concluding this public hearing concerning the special event liquor licenses request and ask for a motion to approve the special event liquor license request presented tonight. So move. We have a motion, do we have a second? Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Okay, we're going to have some parties, it'll be fun. Okay, no old business?
Yes, sir.
Okay, new business.
Um, can you go ahead and sign those? So we're not sending them hostage at our meeting for the rest of the night.
I'll make a quick copy of them and then I'll get you to, thank you very much. Thank you very much.
There we go.
Yeah, if you just want to hop out of the hallway, I will.
We'll let you out of here so you don't have to hear the rest of this if you don't want. Thanks for coming, we appreciate you. Okay, under new business, the engagement of Nick Poppy as special counsel for the town of Kiowa. Any comments, or you want? Ms. Ruth?
Yes, so Nick is on Zoom right now, but he, we are proposing to retain him to represent the town in litigation matters, and he's available to answer any questions, and attached in your packet is the engagement letter, and I recommend that the board approve his engagement.
Hey, thank you. Any discussion, board? I would entertain a motion. So move to engage Nick Poppy as special counsel to the town of Kiowa. We have a second? We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, under new business, we have ordinance two, series twenty twenty-four, and ordinance of the town of Kiowa Colorado adopting the town of Kiowa zoning code updates by reference.
So this is an ordinance amending our zoning code based upon the work we did with planning and zoning and the review by the town, and recommend approval so we can move forward with codifying this, and if anyone has any comments or concerns, free to comment.
One of the comments I'd like to make is that the Planning and Variance Committee spent a tremendous amount of time on this, and I want to commend them for the work they put in. I'd entertain a motion to approve ordinance two, series twenty twenty-four.
I'll make the motion to approve ordinance number two, series twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, Trevor. We have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, under new business, ordinance four, series twenty twenty-four, and ordinance approving the equipment lease purchase from, from Range Kubota Incorporated by and through its municipal lease program.
The information pertaining to the commercial and agricultural use and the credit corporation that Kubota has provided to us is attached to this. This is just a preview because we've not moved forward to securing it until we get an ordinance of approval from the board. But the terms and conditions are laid out in the the drafted document on the back, which will remain permanent once approved ordinance. This is the piece of equipment Kubota gave us leaflets for it. If you want to share those, we don't have four, but that's a piece of equipment that it's applicable to. We are asking for a sixty-month term with three hundred hours per year of usage. The main stipulations is that we don't go over the hours and we return it in good condition.
The question.
Ma'am.
Do we have the option at the end of it, if it's still in good shape, to purchase it? Do you know that?
Yeah, yes. Josh has done a lot of research on that.
Buyout at the end was twenty-one thousand dollars, I read. Purchase option effectable under section fourteen, purchase option price twenty-one thousand forty. Twenty-one thousand six hundred and thirty-four dollars and sixteen cents, I assume, is the buyout, or that's to pay the full lease upfront, I'm not sure. Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I don't know if it's to pay the, to buy the machine and extend.
I was just wondering if we had that option. I don't know.
At the end of our lease, that is the amount, Josh, that we really paid to purchase it, yes. And our payments monthly would be six hundred and sixty dollars and thirteen cents. We are tax exempt.
I'm sorry, can I say that again?
So if you look on page
four.
It's four back, probably, the one that we agreed on.
I didn't think I've got that one, do you know that? Right, let me share hands, I don't have that. I'm looking through my packet. Okay. Where is that?
This is the disagreement. If you go about halfway down, there's a box that says standard payments with an X in it on the left-hand side.
Gotcha, okay.
That's our monthly payment for sixty months.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You didn't give me a copy, you don't like me.
Sorry about that. Bargained.
Ow, I'm sorry.
I'd entertain a motion to approve ordinance four, series twenty twenty-four. So move, we have a motion, do we have a second?
One second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Do they do all maintenance on this thing?
Yes, and the option to rent the attachments is open to us as well. I'm still buying them, I'm just having them set over in the elements and raw.
Yeah, renting attachments is a lot cheaper than going out and buying them in the store.
Right.
Okay, any more discussion?
We can start using it.
On the alleys first. As soon as we get her, we'll train, make sure it's operated correctly, and then we'll get going. Mr. Mendez is our only operator. Okay, okay, we have a motion and a second, any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Do we have any discussion or communication?
No, sir.
I, I will retract my statement, Kim does like me. I'm just old and can't see very well, I found it.
I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Before we do that, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Standing out, Matt Veranda, the lack of professionalism that was going on, I'm beside myself on, I'm just going to ask that our mayor and our board members learn to be a little more professional when there's meetings going on in the next room, and they can hear us.
I agree.
I'm not okay with that.
I would also agree with that, and just, you know, I think we all did the training through SIRS, and some of it was about ethics and everything else, too, and we are ultimately here to serve our public, and we make faces and snarly comments when especially another board is talking. It just feels like we're throwing sand in each other's faces when, when, and we're doing it legally and through, through meetings and stuff, and it's, there's not a lot of people that jump on our meetings, and I wish there was more town involvement, but we really have to present ourselves professionally, and that goes for everybody that does public comment as well, because we're here for one reason and one reason only, and so I think we all just need to remember that.
Good point.
I will apologize to everybody for being loud.
Yeah, me too.
I am oblivious to what we're talking about because I was in the meeting.
That's just the things that we're dealing with, said.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. It's all moved, a second? We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. At eight twenty. Okay.
Recording stopped.